Call us mean or.
Drive to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ms. Moore here, Ms. Thompson here, Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Bitner.
Here.
Mr. Shaboo. Mr. Lunder.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion for passage, second.
Motion made by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. Thompson for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore? Aye. Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Abstain.
Mr. Bitner?
Abstain.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain. Correspondence. Clerk, do we have any correspondence this evening?
I do not have any.
Is there any member of council of correspondence this evening? Hearing none. New Auto Administration Department head reports, Mayor Safety Director, Mr. Eva. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson, members of council and public here this evening. Just one item tonight. Last week, a few of us met with Jason Trapp from ODNR. Last Wednesday to look at like overlooked beach park options. And Jason had some ideas about beach access and different things. I was able to get an email from Tina Seven Bergen. And she works for ODNR, which will allow us to apply for a coastal management assistance grant. With the grant though, the three proposals aren't due until late October twenty twenty-four. But I will make sure that we apply for that grant. That includes my report tonight.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lyons. Good evening.
Good evening. I have no report.
Police Chief, Chief Forsite. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. A few things. We had our still a cruiser events up at Marx. It was a success, a lot more successful than last year. We had a goal of eight hundred dollars in cash donated. And we had a lot of non-perishable food items that were donated to the water pantry. We have our standard food helpers shop at the craft home up since the December. We were having a good year this year as well. We got a lot, a lot of donations. Big last tally. Lieutenant Messenger has a goal of four thousand dollars. Should have a couple hundred dollars. I know she's been contacting parents. Update on our locker room project. Everything moving ahead as planned. We had a bathroom trailer delivered. We had about nine lockers inside. The electric should be hooked up. We have two connects back there for storage. Everything is almost completely empty. Service department is all this online, you know. And Friday, they're gonna start the safe demolition. Let's connect electrical and make everything safe.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for the administration? Mr. Lunder.
Mr. Mayor, we're talking about a grant from ODNR. Is that gonna have to be a matching grant or don't you know yet?
I'm not sure yet, but yeah, it was good that we talked, we met, and.
Anybody else? Hearing none. We'll move on to board committee and commission reports. Community Development Committee.
Yes, Mr. President. I apologize, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. We met on November ninth at seven P M. And it was to review the RFP for the city comprehensive plan and to discuss a proposal concerning block parties. Present was myself, Kevin Bitner, Mary Eva, Councilwoman, Councilwoman-elect Jamie Wall, Councilwoman-elect Skip Gray, Scott Wilhelm, and Troye. The meeting started with a review of the proposed RFP for the city comprehensive plan. Everybody agreed to move it forward to council for review. And unfortunately, I'm still waiting back from Mr. Lyons because I sent it to him to see if he had any comments on it. Haven't heard back from him. There was a discussion on a proposal from Councilwoman-elect Jamie Wall concerning block parties. And informs have been attached. The meeting adjourned at seven fifteen.
Yep. Or it is zoning appeals?
Or the zoning appeals met on twenty eighth at seven P M. The focus of the meeting was for a general appeal for ordinance twelve fifty-two dash oh four at fifty-three eighty-two court on a drive. Present was Ray Key, with myself, Ron Johnson, Michelle Moore, Mike Swinney, Brandy Montgomery, Mr. Bayer E book, and the homeowner, Mr. and Mrs. Durham. Variance was for a garage height limit asking for a twenty foot, going from twenty-four to twenty-two foot ten and three eighths inches, which falls into the twenty percent of the variance, and it was granted. Meeting ended at seven fifteen.
Thank you. Were there any other board committees or commissions that met or didn't give a report at the last meeting? Okay. Open the public to speak. We will now open this to the public to speak. If you'd like to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name and address for the record. Again, it's not a back and forth with councils. It's just an opportunity to speak to council. Hearing none. We'll move on to legislation before council. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-three. Second reading. If you could please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-three, second reading. A resolution granting preliminary approval to the planned unit development P U D that is provided for in chapter one, two, five, five of the codified resolutions for the property described as permanent parcel numbers nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one five zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one six zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one seven zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one eight zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one nine zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 twenty zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 twenty one zero, and nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 seventy-five zero.
This has been sent to the committee of the whole for December fifth, seven P M. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-four. Please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-four, second reading. A resolution requesting the Lake County Auditor to make advanced payments on taxes pursuant to Ohio Revised Code three twenty-one point three four and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion on this?
This is for us to be able to receive our tax monies from the auditor's office.
Correct, yes.
Any other discussion, questions on this? Yes.
I think at last council meeting, wasn't it stated that this needed to be passed?
It should be before the end of year.
Anything else? Is there any motions?
Make a motion.
Any motion in general, or are we just? Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lunder. Seconded by Mr. Bitner, because I thought you were just gonna wave or something, you know, no motion. Roll call and suspension of the rules, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-five. If you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-five. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Suzanne Martin-Kason to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to suspend, second.
I have a question. Have we reached out to all of these to see if they still wanted to? Okay, because I know we have some. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Okay.
We weren't giving her a choice. Motion made by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Bitner for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-three dash R dash thirty-six. If you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-six. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Carol Stupinski to the Parks and Recreation Board. Motion to suspend.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Lunder for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, second by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-seven. If you please read it by its title.
Resolution, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three R thirty-seven. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Catherine Rus to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Question. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know if she doesn't want to do the B C A anymore, or actually wants to want to continue with this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion for suspension.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-eight. If you please read it by its title.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash thirty-eight. A resolution confirming the appointment of Thomas Freitas to the Board of Zoning and Beach Appeals.
Any discussion on this?
Motion to suspend.
Suspend by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Lunder. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion for passage, second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Lunder for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash thirty-nine. If you please read it by its title.
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash thirty-nine. A resolution confirming the appointment of David Shaboo to the Civil Services Commission. Motion to suspend.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Lunder for suspension. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Or it is number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero seven. That's still assigned to the committee of the whole until the next one gets sorted out. Or it is number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-two. That was assigned to the ordinance committee. Has it been sent back?
So, the second of November, I sent an email to Mr. Lyons. As soon as he was to correct who we had to talk about, it was to be sent back to. Did I get it?
I thought. That I sent a payment.
Yeah, this is still assigned to the ordinance committee for the moment.
I mean.
Or it is number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-three. If you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-three, third reading. An ordinance amending codified ordinance eight ninety-three point zero four, exemptions for community reinvestment area.
Since I don't know where the final draft of this is with Mr. Shaboo being gone, we're gonna send this to the committee of the whole, also for the December fifth meeting. Or it is number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-four. If you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-four, second reading. An ordinance providing temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Menor on the Lake Ohio for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and declaring an emergency.
Questions on this?
This is temporary appropriations for the beginning of the year until we have the budget meeting and set and finalize the budget for the entire twenty twenty-four.
Yes, this will get us through March.
Through March.
Motion to suspend.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Thompson for suspension of the rules. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lunder, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for passage. Roll call please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Or it is number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-five. Please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-five, second reading, referred to planning and zoning. An ordinance rezoning permanent parcel numbers nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one five zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one six zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one seven zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one eight zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 one nine zero, nineteen A zero not one, zero ninety-three B zero 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 twenty zero, nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 twenty-one, and nineteen A zero ninety-three B zero 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 seventy-five zero from Business District One and/or Single Family District E to the zoning classification of a planned unit development P U D that is provided for in chapter twelve fifty-five, the codified ordinances.
Okay, this is also being sent to the committee of the whole for the December fifth, combined with the R dash thirty-three resolution. Old business. Is there any old business tonight? Hearing none. Is there any new business tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Park and Rec has reached out and in twenty twenty-four is the city's hundred year anniversary. So Park and Rec wanted to know if anyone on council wanted to be involved with the planning part of it through Park and Rec, or they want to know if council just wanted to organize something and have them help. So whichever way that we decide, they would like to know what kind of input they could have on it to help.
Any comments on that?
Willing to help out. I think it would be a good collaborative effort. I say we wait until after the new year to start and.
Yes, because it is in October.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other new business?
Is there? Have we resolved customized rental inspections? Have we, has that been finalized? I know we had some back and forth about when, you know, about fees and when we were gonna the frequency of inspections, things like that.
That was finalized.
It is. Is there anything else that, um, that's open other than trees or?
Not on the agenda. It's not open. Or it'll just float out there until that into Neverland. You have what? Well, that's a contract.
Oh, yeah.
That's not, I just leash it.
I'm calling for a meeting tomorrow, right? So, or tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Morning. We've, we've got issues with it, so. Because we don't have an administrative director, we could kind of screw it up.
Okay. Anything else on your new business?
To amend the agenda to have the two ordinances.
Ah, yes, thank you. There are two additional ordinances, uh, that were sent out prior to this meeting. One was a moratorium on the marijuana. And the other one was medical benefits, health benefits. Uh, is there a motion to amend the agenda to add both of those tonight?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris to add both of those onto the agenda. Thank you for reminding me. I have to write that down on here. All right, um, the medical one was first.
Yes, note twenty-seven.
Is there any discussion on this? This was just to update that ordinance to the latest amounts, maximum contributions from city employees from what it was to a higher number now, so.
Have the employees had the opportunity to weigh in on this at all?
With the rate, with the increase in premiums? Uh, no, employees cannot weigh in on it.
I would like to recommend, make a recommendation. We hold on this to the last, the first meeting in December. Rather than suspend the rules tonight, pass it tonight.
I mean, I think with any business, though, my employer, I don't have an option to get lower rates. I mean, it's just the rate that that we get. And we have three different options. They, you know, my personal business, they gives three different options, three different levels, and that's our only choices. I mean, I don't think medical is any different from a government standpoint than a private standpoint. I mean, the rates are what they are.
Right.
Does this mirror what is in any of the police certified contracts?
No, those, um, since collectively we do that, notice don't make it as a contract.
Okay.
Because as, as a city as a whole, we put this together, not based on.
It's not part of a collective bargaining contract.
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Do you know what it's increasing from?
I.
The numbers, I believe, were one fifty and two fifty were the two numbers previously.
Right.
By one of them.
Yeah, and now it's.
Two hundred and three hundred.
Yes.
They're doubling on this? I would say before the first of the year.
Yeah, anything else on this one? Hearing none. This will go on a second reading. Next one, which is ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-eight. Is the marijuana cannabis moratorium ordinance. Everyone should have got a copy of that. Is there any discussion on this?
What is your intent with this, Rob?
The intent with this was, as it is stipulating in the ordinance, was to provide six months for us to figure out where we would allow it in our zoning, if at all, how many, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
I feel this is proactive. I think we should, I'm gonna support this, so. I'll make a motion.
I have a question. Yes, there were produced from wires. I read somewhere, heard on the news that it doesn't take effect for quite what, six months to, or six months to nine months, until the state gets their stuff in order. Is that true or not?
Yes. But in the meantime, we could go ahead and, uh, well, actually, this one only addresses the new recreation marijuana. And medical marijuana. Quite a long time. Both of those, everybody's vote laws allow the communities prohibit marijuana medical dispensaries, what I call medical marijuana dispensary for all of that. Uh, and this new law is what, what that can have been November seventh, like also allows us to prohibit any recreational marijuana shots. Other communities are looking at, uh, maybe the decision on this, that there may be places that are out there, uh, operators out there, maybe looking through space, or in Menor on the Lake, or another place. And the rentals, you know, spaces right now, with the idea that they then be ready to set up operating. Medical marijuana dispensary are already something they can go in. And I don't think that we have any place to, um, specific for those. Some communities are doing a moratorium on all the medical marijuana dispensary and all of those recreation. But, but no, correct. The law does not go into a factory.
Did you suspend? For that?
Yes.
I was saying.
Okay, hold on a second. I have a question for Mr. Lyons. Is there any reason not to make the moratorium for a full calendar, a full year? Because I know how quickly council moves on things. And so just logically, instead of having to redo the moratorium again and again, going for a year just seems to make it better and that we can just repeal it when we're done?
Well, I think unlike here, this council moves very, very quickly. And so I thought now was the reason I said once, I also thought that it's always easier legally defend a shorter moratorium period, you know, as long as, you know, we're actively working during that period of time. Uh, I think many communities are going for one year that would take, it's not past that time. But I just thought from a legal perspective, defending it, this would give us a chance to see what we want to do. And if we needed additional time, decided we wanted to pass it then, we could certainly make this a one year or a change. I think the last moratorium we had was six months.
So we renewed it, renewed it.
And renewed it again.
So there's precedence. That's why I brought that up.
And I thought that, uh, the small black store started at six months, the same reason is that, uh, it gives us a better chance to defend it. Uh, if, uh, you know, somebody would want to challenge it. Now, it's unlikely that somebody's gonna want to challenge it. You're always thinking of the best legal position for the city.
Okay, there is a motion to suspend the rules made by Mr. Bitner, seconded by Mr. Lunder. Roll call on the suspension, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Any further discussion?
Yes. If I understood Mr. Lyons correctly, uh, this one's six months, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to amend this to go for the years, to give council plenty of time to put in action what they want to do without having to redo this, as you just mentioned.
Anybody else?
We start, we, we need to start working more effectively with the council and not drag things out for a year.
Motion.
It's nice to have dreams. Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry.
This one, in my opinion, is going to take a while. I don't disagree with that because this is so new to the, the state as a general. So we're not gonna be able to take somebody else's ordinance and kill, copy, cut, paste. That is, you know, something we are gonna have to look at.
That is, you know, something we are gonna have to look at.
But you can end it earlier.
And it's going to involve planning and zoning because it is.
Still, I don't disagree, this one will take a little bit longer, um. Let you, Mr. Lyons, point is six months is easier to defend versus a year. Yeah, it's gonna make difference, we're gonna extend it.
I could go, if we remember to extend it, that's always the problem. We need to. So I saw either way. Is there a motion?
Motion to, um, motion as written, motion for passage as written.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Moore. Okay. Any other discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bitner?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, we have six months more, six month moratorium.
Mr. Prime, can I uh, uh, and council, are you interested in having a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensing? And I think that there are a number already in like county. Probably not likely that somebody's gonna come in.
So, just from dealing with the medical side, in the city that I'm working, very hard to be even awarded one. I don't know if it's gonna be different because of this recreational now that, did I get bold? Uh, but as far as the medical side, very difficult to get awarded.
Right.
So. It, it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that law has been active, I don't know what, three, four years.
And.
And nobody has come to us, so it's not the same kind of need.
Well, the thousands of applications they got, they're only afforded certain areas, certain. I don't know.
Anybody else? We'll take that as a name. But thank you for asking.
Thank you for that. Voting.
Any other new business tonight? Hearing none, we move on to open the podium speak. Yeah, this is your opportunity to come to the lecture, state your name and address for the record and speak to council. Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and settings of meetings. I believe Parks and Rec is looking like it's going to be canceled, is that correct?
It is correct. I'm checking to see if the emails been updated. It's not been updated, but everything, all the other committee members are saying that it is canceled. And our next meeting will not be until January now.
Okay. Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Committee of the Hall is meeting Tuesday, December fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Organizational meeting of council will be Thursday, January fourth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. The agenda meeting will be, the next agenda meeting will be December seventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M. The next regular meeting with council will be December twelfth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. There will be a charter review committee meeting Thursday, January fourth, twenty twenty-four at eight P M. And there will be a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash twenty-five on Tuesday, January ninth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Are there any other committees or commissions that like to meet anytime soon?
Utility meeting on uh, November twenty-ninth at ten thirty tomorrow morning.
Utility, ten thirty tomorrow morning, who's on that?
Kevin and uh, Shaboo.
Okay. That's tomorrow at ten thirty in the morning, okay. Any other committees want to meet? Okay, before the next council meeting, I would like to see the ordinance committee sort out their legislation, have a final draft sent to Joyce. For uh, inclusion on the agenda, so we can actually have a hard copy of it. Um, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Morris for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?